We will have Pastor Stephen Wang give us our invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you so much for this opportunity to lift up the school board members. Thank you so much for raising them up to make decisions on behalf of the students enrolled in our schools and administrators. We ask for wisdom for them, each and every one of them. You said in the Book of James that if anyone needs wisdom, that we were to ask freely and you give it to us freely and liberally. Our students and our teachers and our administrators face extraordinary challenges today that require greater wisdom and humility to make decisions. Thus, we ask boldly and humbly for you to lead and guide the conversations today. We recognize your sovereignty over us and your lordship over us. So blessed tonight, blessed discussions, let it be civil. As you said, let our words be full of grace seasoned with salt. In the name of Jesus Christ, your Savior, our Savior, amen.
Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the moment of silence.
By the United States of America, into the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone for public comment? Okay, if you have not signed up for public comment, please see the clerk now to sign up. Public comment is a time where the community present matters that they believe deserve the board's attention. Comments are one-way communication from the community member to the school board, and they are not a forum for dialogue or debate. The school board applies the following procedures for all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker or the viewpoint of the speaker. Comments should be presented in a courteous, respectful, and appropriate manner. The public shall address the school board only on matters that are related to the services and policies of the school division. Speeches that cause disruption to the meeting, promote private business ventures, involve threats of any kind, involve intimidating language, relate public office campaigns, involve complaints identifying individuals, students, or personal attacks of staff members is prohibited. Proper decorum and the provisions of this procedural directive are expected to be followed at all public meetings of the school board. Members of the audience shall conduct themselves in the same manners outlined above for the individual speakers and shall not disrupt an open public meeting of the school board, nor incite others to do so. At the discretion of the chair, any person violating the rules listed above may be asked to leave board meetings. When recognized by the chair, speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name, state their relationship to the school division, and indicate in which magisterial district they reside. Commentary during public comment time is limited to three minutes. Our first speaker of the evening is Ray Blazer.
Thank you. Respected members of the board, my name is Ray Blazer. I am a retired educator from King George County Schools. More importantly, I am a proud citizen of the King George Community. Sealston, by the way. I do not have any children, grandchildren, or great-grandchildren in our school system. However, upon leaving the confines of my previous employer, I decided to become an unrestricted advocate for the students of our county. Tonight, I am beginning to fulfill promises that I made to a number of people over the last year. Folks, we live in a society of rules. Those rules must be enforced to prevent chaos and lawlessness. In our schools, we have student code of conduct that is intended to prevent chaos and lawlessness. That code must be enforced. Sadly, it is not in so many cases, and that is affecting our children's education. The student code of conduct has become a joke and teacher morale is at an all-time low. Students are cursing teachers, bullying other students, and creating a restrictive learning environment for everyone. Yet our administrators are doing nothing. Many teachers feel that administrators have become parent appeasers to 5% while forsaking 95%. Our teachers are screaming for enforcement of the rules. Our students are begging for it, and our parents are expecting it. Our students deserve the best education that we can provide. We are falling seriously short of that. And if we accept this, we are part of the problem. We must provide a conducive and safe learning environment for all of our students. Part of providing for our students is offering them the best staff that we can. We need to keep good, dedicated teachers and staff. Our schools turn over between 10 and 20% of their teachers every year. This year, it will most certainly be higher. There is no way that is good for our students. When teachers aren't supported by their administrators, they leave. Our teachers don't feel supported. I know this because a number of them have come to me for help, or maybe just to vent. In either case, they're not happy. So I'm begging you to demand the enforcement of the student code of conduct at every public school in our great community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything to read into the record for public comment? Okay, closing public comment. Oh, I don't think there's anyone on. Okay, superintendent comment?
Thank you, Mr. Blazer. Appreciate you coming out tonight. If you want to have any follow-up conversations, or you want to give me any additional information that you can provide so I can follow up on some of those concerns, I'd certainly be happy to hear that. So anytime you want to come by, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. That's it, ma'am chair.
Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, no changes, then let's move on to our presentations. First, we have the strategic plan.
Yes, so thank you, board members, for allowing us this evening to really present our strategic plan. Just some housekeeping things. We do not have a display board this evening, so anybody that would like to see the presentation, we do have copies of the presentation up here. Our board members can see it on Board Docs. A little bit about the strategic plan. We have four goals in our strategic plan. Each of our, we call them champions. They're responsible for each one of the goals. They'll come forward this evening and really give you an idea of the progress that we've made with our strategic plan and in the direction that we intend to go in in this coming year. The reason we do this this evening is because this conversation really shapes and provides a foundation for our budget request. So a lot of the things you'll hear this evening, you'll also hear as we develop our budget request and present that to the school board members at our next meeting. So without further ado, Ms. Yazurski has our goal number one, which is the investment in our employees.
Good evening. I am glad to come before you this evening and talk about goal one of our strategic plan. I am not going to read all of these objectives verbatim for you, as you do have them in front of you, and they are the same objectives that were in our strategic plan last year. But what I would like to focus on is are the highlights and accomplishments that we were able to achieve this past school year. We were able to provide salary increases, a 1% COLA and a step increase for all employees. We also brought all of our salary scales to a starting step of $15 an hour, which we are actually ahead of the Virginia goal of having that. That has to be $15 an hour for all minimum wage employees by the January of 2026. We partnered with Mark III for advisement on health insurance options and to offer competitive and robust supplemental benefits. And I would like to, at this point, let you know that our Mark III advisor, we have a meeting with him tomorrow, and he will be on your agenda at the next meeting to talk about our health insurance plans moving forward. We were able to increase the sick leave payout for retirees from $5,000 to $10,000 in last year's budget, which was a huge benefit for our employees. We have planned, we've been in the planning stages of a benefits fair that will take place on April 30th of this year. We increased and restructured the athletic and academic stipends, which I have heard, and I think many of us have heard, positive comments and how very grateful to you all for restructuring those stipends. We have continued to add and strengthen our college and university partnerships with teacher prep programs such as ITech, which is through the Virginia Department of Education. Also, Call Me Mister, which is a program that we are excited about with the University of Mary Washington. And we are also in a regional apprenticeship program that is sponsored by the University of Mary Washington, but with some other school divisions in the Region Three district. We began the revision of job descriptions, which we will complete in the spring of 2025. That has been an arduous task. We are looking at every single job description for all of our employees and revamping them. We have gotten through many of the 12-month ones. We've gotten through the teachers and the paras, and we're at this point with the teachers and the paras, we are doing focus groups with some of those individuals to finish up those final versions of those job descriptions. And then we were excited this past year that we were able to improve our new employee onboarding program by actually having a Mark III representative with us during onboarding so they could talk to our new employees about the supplemental benefits that are available to them. What we need to focus on, or what we would like to focus on in the upcoming budget, and this is on the next page in your packet, the areas of need and future targets. We need to continue to pay, to provide salary increases in order to be competitive. We need to continue to work toward addressing the compression in the salary scale, which I am certainly not going to steal any of Dr. Boyd's thunder for our budget presentation, but we have tried to address that somewhat in this upcoming budget. We need to continue to enhance our onboarding process and bring the HR department into the 21st century by doing more things digital instead of pushing paper. So we have, we are looking at two platforms called onboarding and e-forms that are made available to us by NeoEd. We are excited about using those. And then we would also continue to advocate to minimize the impact of the health insurance increases, if there are any, on employees' salaries. And I'm sure that will be a discussion during our budget talks. We also, looking further into the future, just further than this year, we would like to offer leave benefits to part-time employees. Right now, our part-time employees have no leave benefits, no sick leave, nothing. And that we would like to be able to offer them some type of leave benefits. We were always looking at the feasibility of a compensation study. I just received something from Stafford County today. They're doing one and have asked some neighboring divisions if they would like to participate. We would also like to explore the enhancement of personal, sick, and annual leave benefits. And you might say, well, what would that be? Just a quick example would be maybe we could offer one more day of personal leave to our employees. All employees, all full-time employees receive personal leave. Maybe we could offer an additional day of personal leave. We are hoping to conduct the following events in 2025, a retirement planning seminar, and also we have a support staff job fair. If that, the one position that we have had a hard time filling this past year has been the secretarial positions at the schools, so we might offer a support staff job there. We would also like to explore options for a longevity bonus or a retention incentive program. And last but not least, we would still like to expand our, grow our own program where we would grow our own employees, perhaps paraprofessionals. We have a program called Kites. What's it stand for? That's right. The King George Initiative for Tackling the Educational Shortage. That's it. We would like, that's a program basically geared at paras that we could, we could work with them and develop them into teachers and then hire them as our own. So that is all I have to say about goal one. So the next person, goal two, I think, is Ms. Hill.
Good evening. I am representing goal two, which is quality instruction and innovation. We're a unique area in that we collaborate with our special education department for instruction, and we collaborate with our technology department for instruction, and then, of course, our instructional leadership, including our specialists. So again, these objectives for our goal two are the same as last year's. But we would like to share some of our highlights as well. For goal two, my papers are out of order, sorry. For goal two, we participated in several regional programs and regional cohorts. Some of the areas that we focused on this year is our social studies cohort. We have new SOLs for social studies, so as a region with other school divisions, we look at those new SOLs and we develop curriculum maps and curriculum plans to go along with that. And we work with other school divisions, some larger, where they have staff that is assigned specifically to that subject matter, and then, of course, with some of our smaller counterparts as well. We also are involved with a math and English and a gifted leadership cohort. And also this year, we are involved with a generative AI cohort, which, as you probably know, with AI right now, we are already behind in trying to keep up with how that technology is changing the way students learn and quite frankly, how teachers and administrators learn as well. So there are a lot of things out there that are being offered to the school division that are AI-based. And so we're having to keep informed and develop plans, including plans that will help guide our staff and how they can use AI with students and what students can learn using AI. So we're involved with that. Participating in two regional governor schools, which is not necessarily new, but we have added a third option for our students with the Academy of Technology and Innovation. Last year, or this current school year is our first cohort with that group. So our students are very, very lucky and fortunate to have three different programs in addition to our regular high school program that they can participate in. We have seven students going into that program this year and will be adding seven more for next year. We gave 392 advanced placement exams this year with 76% of our students passing, which is quite commendable. Those three or above scores will translate to college credit in many universities across the country. It's a little bit different than dual enrollment courses where students can transfer those directly into Virginia schools, but maybe, and not necessarily, into schools outside of Virginia, whereas the advanced placement does hold value across the country because it is a national test. So that's a great thing for our students, and they've done very well. And I would like to say that our advanced placement teachers are excellent teachers, and they put in so many hours above and beyond because the writing piece that goes with most of these exams, there's a lot of writing that is required, and so those papers need to be graded by the teachers. They spend lots of time. We also increased our opportunities for work-based learning and service learning. Since we've had our work-based learning specialist, Mrs. Rinko, we have really been able to hit the ground running with work-based learning. And literally, she has been all over the county and the region drumming up business for our students so that they have opportunities to not only go out into the community and get learning, service learning project hours and also hours within businesses. And I'd like to say that we just, and you're probably aware of this, but if you're not and the public is not, we just had an apprenticeship offered to one of our students with Four Elements Electric Company. And that partnership is one that came out of a call from a CTE Advisory Committee meeting. When we spoke to the folks that were visiting in that meeting, we said, we really need our communities to step up and to really partner with us so that we have a connection between the school to the businesses. And Four Elements has done that. They have been a wonderful partner. In addition to Four Elements, Germana Community College has also stepped up, and we are offering our second year of an after-hours program for students that may not have been able to get some of the CTE certifications during school. I think a lot of times, students wake up right at graduation and think, oh, I should have taken that class or I should have gotten that certification. So this is another opportunity right in our high school where Germana comes in after hours at 3 o'clock and offers a course where they can get two certifications, one of them being OSHA, which is something that our CTE teachers are already certifying our students in. But again, they have to be in the class to get that training. And so if they miss that opportunity, we are offering, through a partnership with Germana, an opportunity for them to get that after hours. And if you want more information, there is information on our school division or on our King George High School website about that. We also have increased summer opportunities for our students. We offered a gifted summer program in addition to our regular summer school program this past year, and we hope to do that again this year. We've adjusted the calendar and the daily schedules to align to best instructional practices. So we have really examined our schedules to try to tighten up the number of hours that are being spent in instruction. And so we've examined and scoured them to make sure that we're utilizing our time well. We secured dedicated time in the contract calendar for the Virginia Literacy Act modules. So I'd like to say thank you again to the school board for offering those half-days for our students, for our teachers, so that they could get that training. We need trained teachers, and there's just not enough time in the day. So those half-days were really, really helpful for our teachers to get the training that they needed. Providing daily reading interventions to 479 students in K-5 and math interventions to 312 students in K-5. So interventions in addition to the regular instructional program. And addressing the needs of the students that are just missing the mark for the areas that they are, what am I trying to say? So for their different SOLs that they are supposed to learn in their classroom. If they're not meeting those, then we offer them this extra intervention during the day. So providing after-school tutoring opportunities as well in K-8, where we're supported with grant funding, so we can pay teachers to offer that tutoring. In addition, we have six new special education administrators that were added to the staff to help with our students that need services under the special education department. We implemented PLC and division-wide professional development. All schools, and this one probably should have been at the very beginning, are accredited, and we are one of few in the area that all schools are accredited. King George County Schools has already provided fall growth assessments and winter growth assessments at the middle school level. We have done the fall growth assessments at the elementary level, and we are approaching giving them the winter assessments at the elementary level once we get back in school and the snow is removed. King George High School has given 873 fall SOL with the preliminary data looking really great, especially we're excited about some of the math numbers that we have. Forty-eight seniors at King George High School have passed their SOLs in the fall, and these are students that really needed to pass them so that they could move on to graduation, and so that's very exciting. We've given 227 certification competency tests in the fall of 2024, so that number will grow. And we are aligning the K-2 report card for our younger learners so that we can show mastery that are aligned with the standards on the report card, and it's easier for the parents to see where exactly their students are achieving. So upcoming budget needs. Really, there are a lot of staffing needs. I have to be honest with you. We need teachers, and we need all kinds of teachers. At the high school level, we have not kept up with the growth. And if you miss one year, you, you know, if we have 30 students come in last year and we don't hire a teacher, that's 30 extra students. That's a lot of students. And we need to keep up with hiring additional teachers to meet the needs of students, especially in math and in our elective areas at the high school. And I speak to the high school because secondary is under my oversight, but I know we need teachers as well for our reading program to meet the needs of the VLA. And so we have put some of those positions into the budget. Another, and I'm going to jump down to future needs. I have hired an ESOL teacher as well. We've had over 50% growth in the last three years in our ESOL program. We teach 11 different languages to K-12 students. And while Spanish is the primary language, it is not the only language. There are 10 other languages that we work with students, helping them to learn English. And they're all at different levels. It truly is a one-room schoolhouse, so we need staff. Additional seats to the Governor's School Program, Academy of, and Academy of Technology. So these are expensive programs, quite honestly, but they are valuable programs, and they meet the needs of a population of students that need these extra challenges. And so this is a way that we can address that, and we're looking to add some additional seats. Other future needs are for the middle school to accommodate the VLA, reading plan requirements. And one of those things that each student has to have is a plan, a reading plan. And again, this is time-intensive for teachers. So building a schedule that will allow teachers to have the embedded time to address creating these plans and working with the staff to make sure that the plans, it's similar to a special education with an IEP. Every student has to have a reading plan. Increasing math specialists to support instruction. Right now, our math specialist at the secondary level is shared between schools. It would be great to have an additional math specialist, and that's a future need. Increasing service learning opportunities and increasing community partnerships. And I'm really just using the podium to reach out to everybody in our community to say, if you need workers, join our advisory team or come out to CTEs so that you can share your concerns and we can partner with you to create a pipeline for our students into the workforce. So that's all I have. Thank you.
At the end.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to present our goal three in the strategic plan, which is our community collaboration, engagement, and communication. At the top of the first slide, we talk about some of our new initiatives this year related to communication and engagement. A big win for us was having a unified teacher communication platform. So for the first time, all of our teachers have access to School Messenger, which links directly to our student information system so that all the contact information can be constantly updated, sort of in our ever-changing world and how that information changes. So that was a big win for us. Also new this year are our superintendent advisory committees. We're always looking for new and innovative ways to really engage our community. So working with Dr. Boyd, we have a student advisory committee both at middle school and high school full of students that the administrators have selected, and that has been very informative. We also have a faculty advisory committee that meets, similarly to provide input and feedback and help guide and give us direction. And then we also have a parent committee, which we host in conjunction with our county council PTA. So the parent advisory is open to the public. We love to welcome everyone in, and then we hold those just to And then we hold those just ahead of the county council PTA meeting, so we have parents that are already directly involved in our schools, able to participate in that committee. So those were some of our big wins and new initiatives. Some of our ongoing initiatives that are worth mentioning or highlighting, we do an internal weekly newsletter. So every Thursday, all of our employees get a blurb about what's happening around the school division and things to look for, things to make sure everyone is aware of. Then we do the monthly family newsletter, which is a much bigger publication that I'm sure everyone has seen, complete with pictures and updates from our schools, as well as our departments at the school board office, and then in any upcoming information, calendar dates, things of interest for our school community. It is also probably worth noting that we do have employee recognition programs. So each month, we have a shout-out program for employees to nominate other employees for all of the hard work and really amazing things that happen every single day. And then in the spring, we host a shower our staff with compliments, where the community is able to give their input for any staff member in King George County, and we print all those out and highlight one from each school and department on social media as well. So those are some of the big things we have. And the last is just our FOIA requests to kind of keep it in everyone's forefront, that that's another function that needs to happen. In 2024, we had 22 FOIA requests fulfilled by King George County Schools. And if you want to look at the next slide, we will quickly do the social media highlights because I think this is very interesting. So we have all the analytics from 2024 calendar year, January to December, which is slightly different than a school year, so I always have to like wrap my brain around the calendar. If you look at the top, we had 1.34 million impressions across all of our social media channels. And an impression is anytime our account comes across any screen, so any user's account. That's a pretty big accomplishment. You can see in the statistics, Facebook is our most viewed or most-used means of social media. And then there is a quick snapshot of our highlights from Facebook in 2024. I apologize, the public can't see it, but the post with the most interaction from Facebook is actually the senior walk at King George Elementary, where our seniors go back and visit their elementary school. And then the second one is graduation itself from 2024. And the third highest is Secret Dress Like Mr. Monroe Day, where the staff and students had a secret spirit day from their principal, and they all came to school dressed as Mr. Monroe. So that was the third most engaged post. And then just below that are Instagram highlights. The highest post again is Senior Walk, when our seniors returned to King George Elementary. The second highest is when Mr. Watson's office was elfed by some magical elves at the high school, and everything was wrapped up in Christmas paper. And then our third highest on Instagram is our Teacher of the Year post from this year. So all very notable things to highlight. And the last slide are just some upcoming needs that we know are coming. We will do continued professional learning for the teacher communication platform, as well as have some enhancements to that coming as early as the spring. And the really big one for communication is the new website that we're going to have as a budget request. There are new website guidelines that are federal that go into effect in 2026. So we need to be able to comply with that, as well as offer an updated user experience. So that is what we have very hard been working for, all of the quotes and all of the different products available to be prepared for budget season. And just some very future needs, we know that we're going to continue to update our mass communication platform to just keep that update with what's the industry standard. And then something Dr. Boyd and I have talked about is creating a year-in-review publication that would come out at the end of the summer to open up the new school year with all of our highlights and statistics related to the school year as a means of public communication. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, it's my pleasure to bring to you Goal Four, which is our safe, secure, and healthy learning environments. Goal Four consists of two objectives. While Goal B is references the safety features related to our physical buildings, much of our strategic plan is centered around Goal A, which is focused on the physical, mental, and emotional safety and well-being of our students and staff. We'll go ahead and get to the next slide, which are our highlights and our accomplishments for this year. To begin with, we launched year two of our Character Strong program. Character Strong is our K-12 character education curriculum. And I'm proud to say that it is going very well, K-12. Second bullet, we provided the Train the Trainer Professional Development for our threat assessment teams. We sent a group of folks to be trained in threat assessments who came back and are working to train staff at their schools. We added the addition of two clinic assistant positions, shared between the elementary school, and then one shared between the middle and the high school. This has been very helpful, so thank you to the board for that budget-approved position from last school year. That has been a great relief to our nurses and our clinics. We implemented the Office on Youth Alternatives to Discipline Program at the middle school and the high school. Just a little bit about what that is. The Alternatives to Discipline Program provides an educational component with a lesser consequence. The courses are provided through the Office of, Office on Youth in Fredericksburg at their school, at both the middle school and the high school, at no cost to the families. The current, the current programs offered are anger management, substance abuse, group education, and voice program, which stands, focuses on developing skills in vocal choice, ownership, intelligent decision-making, social skills, and empathy. We'll move on back up to the other, the other bullets. We also received just recently a grant for the dangers of fentanyl and activation through Virginia Foundation of Healthy Youth, which will be able to implement and use those funds throughout the rest of this school year. The next set of bullets deal with some other highlights, chronic absenteeism. Although we did not reach the goal that we were shooting for, which is 15%, we did reduce our chronic absenteeism from 20.9% as a school division to 17.96%. Our goal for our strategic plan was 18.5, so we didn't, we did, we did reach that goal, but for the state, we do need to get that to 15%. Bullying incidents decreased by 12.5% from 51 incidents in the previous year to last year at 45 incidents. So it is a reduction. It's still certainly a work in progress. We continue to address bullying proactively through PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior, Interventions, and Supports. Our cell phone, which is new this year, policy is assisting with decreasing bullying. Our bent forms that were mentioned in previous school board meeting, which is bullying is not tolerated, were refocused after the school board meeting and have been used since then. Our K-12 Character Strong program focuses specifically on anti-bullying campaigns throughout the year that include such events as Blue Shirt Day for the kickoff of World Day of Bullying Prevention. We developed at the, the goal was to, as I spoke last year, to develop eventually our own alternative education building or program in a separate building for middle and high school students. Currently, our high school students attend the Phoenix Academy in Stafford, and we pay for those seats for, to send our students there. Our dream is to have our own program. The high school took a step towards that this year in developing an in-house alternative school within the building called Flex. I would say it has been a successful launch at the high school, and we, we do appreciate Mr. Watson and his team's efforts to do that. Flex allows, just a little bit about Flex. Flex does allow for disruptive students to be removed from the regular classroom and irregular classes and a regular schedule to a more structured environment for a period of time in order to address the behaviors before gradually returning the previous students to their schedule, sometimes after weeks, sometimes after months, and sometimes it's, it's one class at a time, depending on the nature of, of the situation. Additionally, these students that are in Flex are not suspended, even though they're removed from their normal environment, and they're put into a different location, a different room with highly-trained teachers. They do not count against our chronic absenteeism. So it's sort of a win-win, is that they're removed from, from the disruption and the regular environment, but they also do not count against attendance, and they're still getting their education in, in the building. A couple other highlights to mention would be that we did, after a long time, but we did receive our new two-way radios for our buses. I know our transportation department, Mr. Grigsby, and our drivers are extremely happy about that because if you've ever listened to the chatter on the, on the walkie-talkies, it is the, literally the telephone game with trying to get from the bus garage to one bus to another bus because the signals were not great enough. So this was part of the greater expansion from the county that included the school division, that we have new, new receivers throughout, throughout the county, and the, the school buses will greatly benefit from this. The schools will also very soon be getting their two-way radios as well, which will help with communication between the school and, and transportation, as well as the school division and other emergency agencies throughout King George County Schools. So that was good news. We'll flip over to areas of need and future targets where we have some work still to be done. The first bullet on the next page, we did see an increase of total offenses related to safety of self or others by 14%. So I mentioned this category last year. This is a category we, we hone in on. The state provides the discipline, the discipline report to us in different categories. And this one is titled Behavior That Endangers Self or Others. And the specifics that go along in this category would be any assault, fight, drugs, or threats. And those are probably the four biggest that, that we would see, and there's a few others that fall into that category. So we did see an increase in that. That is definitely in the wrong direction, and we want to continue to, to do things that we are doing that would see a decrease in those things. So in addition to disciplinary measures, which for most, all of those includes a, at least, you know, a, a certain number of days of suspension out of school, we do also have Flex that we talked about. And then we also have the Office on Youth, which I mentioned earlier, which would provide an educational component rather than a suspension without any sort of educational component. The good news about the Office on Youth is it requires the parents to buy into that and to agree to sign off on the paperwork, and also with the understanding that their child is getting some sort of educational component so that they don't hopefully repeat the violation. Moving on down to the next bullet, although chronic absenteeism did decrease, as I mentioned earlier, we're not where we need to be. And we certainly are working on several things to do that. One, one is the third bullet, as a suggestion to come back with some, some creative ideas as we continue to research what schools are doing. These, it was sort of the carrot and the stick, and we were really struggling with the stick part of that conversation for attendance because if a student is not attending, there's not much of a stick that's going to get a student to come to school. But, but sometimes students are not attending, not, not because of, of fear of, of a consequence, but they're not attending because they can't connect, or it's just not for them. And, and granted, it's not for every student, but sometimes a virtual opportunity might be. So our goal would be to launch a virtual Virginia program for our secondary schools, our middle and our high school for the 25, 26 school year. We've already sent some survey information out and received some of that information back. And we hope to not only attract our current King George County School students, who maybe are not being successful in the middle school or the high school, but also some of our homeschool students and, and other private stu, private school students in the King George County area that will want to become a King George County School student and take advantage of this program. So I know Dr. Boyd had mentioned that in a previous meeting. We are moving forward with that with meetings next week and some opportunities for parents to come and for information sessions in February. So that will also could potentially help with chronic absenteeism with students who are not engaged in coming to school face-to-face, might be much more engaged virtually, working through the virtual Virginia program and a much more flexible schedule. Next, we are requesting from a safety standpoint, another school safety officer. We currently have one school safety officer who's in the high school, was focused on, solely focused on safety, discipline, in the lunches, in the halls, outside, but mostly just in the hotspot areas of the building, wherever those are. And it's, we've had two years and, and two very good, good ones. We really need one in the middle school. We're hoping that this grant comes, comes through. The last year was in the budget. We did not receive the grant. We're hopeful that we will receive the grant this year. So that would be in addition of a school safety officer at the middle school. And then last, that last bullet there in that section, it says, "Consider funding to support the in-house alternative education program that the high school called Flex." The middle school was not able to make that work, and the high school made it work, but they were very creative in reallocating resources. And I don't know how sustainable, honestly, that would be long-term. I think Mr. Watson is committed to it. He wants to continue to try to do it for the second semester, but it, it really is not, it, it's asking teachers to do a little more on their planning period and that sort of thing to make it work. So that would be something that we want to budget. I know it's not in this year's budget, but you know, for the, for the future, that's something we'd like to see for our schools. And then those last two bullets is that our student and family support during the school year. We did provide the funding for the Office on Youth Alternative Suspension Program. It would be nice to see that in the budget. It is not in the budget currently, but maybe for future years, it would be great to include that. It is currently grant-funded. And then that last bullet is student and family support during the summer. We do have the need that is in the budget for elementary school counselor and lead social worker to move from 10 to 12 months, and our, our lead nurse to move from 11 to 12 months. And there is a lot of work that needs to be done in the summer in preparation. I think Ms. Fisher spoke to you about that earlier, so that is all from safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we had a couple of questions. Mr. Bush?
Yeah, a couple. One is about the new special ed positions. Well, you said there were six of them, and I guess one of the common things that we always heard was, and first of all, you did a great job on the presentation, but one of the common things that we often heard that when, when I visit the schools, especially in the special ed department, is they don't have enough time to do the IEPs. So I, I guess the question is, with these six new positions, are, are they able to do a better job with the paperwork, especially in regards to IEPs?
Well, we have, the Special Education Department reconfigured. So these weren't necessarily, they were new positions, but we removed some positions and then reconfigured the funding so that we could have these new positions, which offered an administrative position at each of the schools, so similar to a principal, assistant principal. And yes, those, those people that were hired into those positions are helping with some of the paperwork. But unfortunately, and, and special education is not under my umbrella, but I, I do know that the amount of paperwork is a lot and that the teachers still are responsible for some of it as far as making sure that the IEPs are written correctly, not from the regulation side, but for the student, the individual student that they have in their classroom, and make sure that the students' needs are being met. So, so it's, it's a team effort.
And I do remember that discussion. I was in the committee when we talked about that, which was great.
And they need to be updated regularly, and that's the other, you know, it's an ongoing type of document that, you know, as a student, as you measure the student's growth and the successes of the student, then the IEP changes and by deadlines, so.
I'm, I'm just wondering if the, the special education teachers have felt a little bit of relief from having these, but possibly not.
It's a challenge.
I know it is.
It's a challenge, and even with, like, at the high school level, for example, It's a challenge. And even with, like, at the high school level, for example, when you have paraprofessionals that are assisting or even just a push-in model of special education teachers that are pushing in, it's a challenge, especially with the content.
There's probably a further discussion I could have with Ms. Howard, too. But thank you. I will. Thank you.
That'd be great. Can I answer anything else under instruction while I'm up here?
Do. I have a question.
Okay.
For the after-school tutoring side of it?
Yes.
Are those usually the same teachers doing that?
Often, yes. We open it up to all teachers.
Yes.
To be honest, it's challenging to get enough teachers to stay after school. So a lot of them are parents and have students that are in activities and things like that. So that prevents them from staying after hours. And so they will not step up to, you know, offer this opportunity, even though it's a paid opportunity. But then others are definitely willing and are there and are committed to staying the longer day, in the longer day.
Yeah, I do understand. Like, I wouldn't be able to with kids and everything as well. The other question I had was, so you mentioned about giving more planning time? What would that look like, other than like the half-days? Or what would you suggest if you have one? If not, it's okay. You can talk about it later. But I just didn't know if you had anything offhand.
Well, I think the half-days have helped a lot.
Right.
And so making sure that the half-days, you know, are dedicated to allowing teachers to do the planning is part of it. There's so much that needs to happen, including professional development. But planning is extremely important, especially time where the teams can collaborate. And so building a schedule where teams can collaborate, the middle school has done a really great job with this. It's a lot more difficult at the high school to do this. There's so many moving parts and so many individual courses that it sometimes keeps teams from being able to have that. But they have done a great job this year. That's been a focus at the high school to try to create a time for collaborative planning. The elementary schools have built in collaborative planning time. So it really depends on the schedule and the availability of the teachers. Where it's really challenging is with special education teachers because they're not as available because they're in, you know, different classrooms. It's challenging to get a team together and then also the special education teachers there as well.
So we just need to figure out how to make that happen, possibly, if it is able to. I did hear from teachers that a lot of times when that time is given to them, it's then filled with something else that's important. But it takes that planning time away, so they don't really have it sometimes. So maybe we can try to fix that if it is broke.
We've tried to do that a little bit with, whenever we do have those opportunities, like our in-service week, our teacher workdays, we've, at the beginning of the year, we carved out specific times for building-level initiatives, classroom and teacher-level, you know, time, and then also division-level things that we have to cover. It's just so much. It's a lot to have to cover. But we try to stay within those bounds so that we do recognize that teachers need time in their classrooms. You know, it's, you hear that so often, that they just need to be in their classrooms, they need to work on their lesson plans and doing their report cards and everything else that's involved. So we want to make sure that we do provide that time to them as best we can. It's just...
It's hard. It is challenging. Yeah, I know. Mr. Frank, you had a question?
Yes, Christine. I'm not shooting the messenger.
That's okay.
Okay. Well, how many students are taking part in this after-school tutoring opportunities? If you don't know the answer, that's fine.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to pretend I know the answer. I can tell you that we have a program at the elementary level and we have a program at the middle school level. And we have, well, let me ask Andrea. Andrea, do you know the numbers?
I think it's 100.
Yeah.
The tie is 100, but it's 55.
So here's another interesting fact, is that we invited probably 200 students, more, 250 students, something like that. And so we go out on a limb inviting 250 students because what if they all show up? We don't have the staff to accommodate that. But regularly, we only have so many families that sign up. And there are varying reasons for that. At the middle school, it could be transportation because we can't provide transportation for them to get home after that. That's one issue. The other issue is, you know, students are active after school. And so they may go on to, you know, practices and lessons and things like that. Or the other issue is that they just don't come. The families don't send them. So right now, our average number at the high school or at the middle school is around 65. And that fluctuates. So some weeks, it's a higher number and some weeks, it's a lower number. And that, you know, multitude of reasons for that. And then we also have the program at the elementary school where attendance is more consistent, but it also takes ups, it also has dips. At the elementary level, we do provide busing for that. So...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One more about the tutoring. Just one more question. Did you say you have enough teachers that are, have agreed because of the pay that they receive? Or are you short? You do have enough?
Currently, we have enough teachers.
Okay.
But sometimes it's a challenge. We may have to go out for a second round and ask again. Right now, we do have enough teachers.
Okay.
And, you know, the salary is very good for the position. So we do make sure that those teachers are compensated for their extra time.
I was just thinking, if you were short, I mean, would you accept to have, say, retired teachers or something to do that same thing? I mean, there's not a need.
We have not explored that.
Okay. But doesn't sound like you need to. You have enough teachers.
Right now, I think we're all set. But if, should we ever get to that point, we certainly could explore that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have one for Mr. Wright.
That?
Yeah, I have questions in another area.
Dr. Wright, yes. You mentioned that there was four reasons for the increase in the self-harm to others or themselves. What, do you know which, is it the drug-related? Is that the highest? Or do you know which one of the four that you mentioned were probably causing that rate to go so high?
The behavior that endangers self or others?
Yes, sir.
No, I just have the, I just put down the four big ones, which were assault, fighting, drugs, and threats.
You think that some of it might be, and you can answer this, too, now that we don't, they have to face each other because the phones are put away, that that might be causing some of that?
Well, this data would be, this data is from the last school year. So it's really the 2024 data compared to the 2023 data. So the 2025 data won't be available till August.
I would say it's anecdotal data, too. I mean, we can, see if we can try to formulate some data on this. But what I'm getting from staff is that they feel like physical educations and bullying and things like that with the absence of phones has improved. You know, where we are with phones, that's improved because it used, as the former high school principal, it was a weird phenomenon that when phones were very prevalent in the hallways, you could tell something was about to happen because they were all ahead of us in terms of communicating on their phones. And again, anecdotal, but what you're hearing from the staff at the school right now is that that's not happening like it used to. So I think that's going to be an improvement that we'll see in the long run.
And then my other, thank you. My other question is, and this is an honest question of just trying to understand, and this may be because we're, but I'll just ask it instead of trying to explain it. Why do we set the goal, like, for absenteeism higher than the state standard goal? Why do we have it at?
No, that's a good question. So sometimes it's good to set the goal at a reasonable, a reasonable rate of reduction or increase. In this case, chronic absenteeism, we wanted to see it reduced. And I can't remember the exact number, but I think it was to try to reduce it by 10%, which would be a good number. Granted, not where we wanted to be, but at least it's like we're going in the right direction. So...
But how does the state look at that?
They don't, they wouldn't really care if we were, for, they do care for your, for other things such as your failure rate. So if you were to decrease, even though you didn't get to a certain percentage that you were trying to get to, but if you decreased your failure rate by 10%, then you would get what's called safe harbor, which means you would not be...
Penalized, penalized.
Penalized for that. It doesn't count for chronic absenteeism. So we do need to meet the 15%. So I see your point, you know?
I know. I was asking because sometimes, I mean, it makes sense that if they see a decrease at least, they consider that. So I guess our next goal is...
They do for the academic pieces, but not for the attendance pieces.
Okay. I think the Virginia school, the virtual school is going to help get that 2% down to 15, hopefully.
I think it's another piece that will help. I think it certainly could, will help.
Those were my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for safety?
Yeah, Dr. Wright, I'm sorry.
Yes, Dr. Wright, you talked about absenteeism. And is the all-in, is that still going on? Remember at the start of the year, we had the all-in program?
Oh, the all-in program. We still have the finances for that, Dr. Boyden?
It'll go through next year, through 2025.
Is anybody taking advantage of that? Are teachers going out and talking with students? I mean, I know they were, but all they're still...
Yeah, we still have, we still have some, we're still using those funds and still working towards some of those initiatives. We are. And we still have the all-in funds through 2025.
I will tell you that I had a parent tell me that she thought it was ridiculous that somebody showed up at her door to ask why her kid wasn't at school. And I was like, yes. Yes, thank you.
Let me tell you, I had a question in the same area. Dr. Wright, the chronic absenteeism that we've been talking about here, we'd like to get down to the 15%, obviously. But you said one of the problems is, you know, what kind of stick do we have? You can offer incentives, and we've done some of that. Some of these programs are helping a little bit. But my question is, do, what kind of cooperation do we have in terms of a stick? I hate to talk about this in some ways, where truancy officers and the courts and the parents, how is that relationship working? Because that is a stick. It's not a nice one, but it's there. Is that working or not?
No, absolutely.
Okay.
No, that is definitely working. We do have, we're one of the few school divisions that actually has a truant officer.
Right.
So we, and he is a very busy person. He meets regularly with each of the schools. So there's a day each week that he goes to the three elementary schools and the high school and the middle school. He meets with those teams. And that's set aside for the day that he goes there to focus solely on attendance. And then he works closely with the social workers to apply the Chin's petition, Chin's petition for those students who are in need of support through the court services. So we've, we've been very involved and working very closely with our courts. And they're, they work very well with us. And there's a good degree of communication between our school social workers, our truant officer, and the court services folks. So I think that was a very good relationship there. We've definitely seen some supports for, come out of the court services for our families, especially for students with high chronic absenteeism. Some of the, the other pieces of that that we're, so that's one piece. That is, it does require a lot of paperwork and a lot of time and a lot of effort to get to that point before going to court. I know that some of our board members have mentioned taking a look at promotion and retention. That is also a piece, especially when you look at it under the vision of athletic eligibility. We start looking at different motivational factors for students. And if you include absenteeism with that, I think that is a very big carrot or stick, however you want to look at it. But that's another discussion that needs, that's on the books to be had in the very near future.
I thought we've kind of already started that discussion, I know. Are we moving forward? That was my next question, but...
I was going to provide that in my superintendent comment.
Oh, all right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your piece in the, in the presentation.
I'd like to just say thank you, too, to our champions. This is a lot of work and certainly appreciate trying to pull together all of this information, not only with what we've done, but what we intend to do through each of these goals in the coming years. Thank you. We are provided, responsible annually to provide this feedback to the board. So hopefully you guys appreciate some of this information. And as I mentioned earlier, this is the building blocks for our budget request. So you'll see that when I create the budget presentation, I rely heavily on this information to shape our budget requests moving forward. So thank you all. Ton of work and certainly appreciate you guys putting all the time and effort in putting it together. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, now, moving on to the King George High School cell phone update. I understand Mr. Watson's going to give us a presentation.
Yes. As Mr. Watson comes up, we've, we had a decent amount of conversation and debate on our cell phone initiative before the break. And at the request of the board chair, we compiled some information. Mr. Watson wants to share some of that information for us tonight so that we can do a couple of things. Number one, inform the board on where we are with cell phone initiatives. I don't want to steal your thunder, Mr. Watson. But really, work hand in hand with the board and our schools and making sure that we continue to make progress in our cell phone initiative. So Mr. Watson has put together what I think is a very good presentation on reminding us where we are with our cell phone initiatives. Mr. Watson, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Wish everyone a very happy, healthy, and successful 2025 as we are a few days in. Just quickly, I want to start back at the beginning, which is with implementation. We certainly, as mentioned, don't have screens. I know you guys have that stuff up on your laptops. But we asked our students at the beginning of the year, we had our summer town hall meetings, we asked them to keep their phones visible, or not visible in a way and not in use. We have developed a system to put teachers in the position to report violations quickly and effectively in electronic manner to a proper administration and for administration to act as quickly as they can to enforce the beginning of our violation process, which really starts with students taking, visiting with their administrator, their phone being locked up in a box, which we'll talk about here in a few minutes, and then going through that process. Parent communication, as it's always been and always will remain at the forefront of this process, building parents as a resource for us to help implement the process. And then, as mentioned in the last bullet, that you see there, repeat offenders, and we have repeat offenders certainly, as you do with any rules that we have in our building, there's potential loss of attending extracurricular activities, phones banned from school property, ISS, Saturday School Community Service, in addition to, we've actually had to send some students home because of some of the negative interactions that took place due to enforcing of the cell phone policy. So those things have taken place. I'll update you with some of those consequences, if you will, with some numbers here later. But as I mentioned, and this is, this is old information still, the next slide, as I mentioned earlier, this is a process that revolve, that relies on strong positive relationships, that really relies on patience, that really relies on communication of expectations, understanding the policy, the enforcement approach, being consistent and fair, and also the family and parent support. We, it takes a lot to get this right. And it is a work in progress, certainly, as I think the key word with this, as I mentioned the last time I did this, is patience. It's going to take some time. It's a big shift in how we do business. I think we've made a lot of positive strides, but at the same time, there's a lot of work to be done. I think this is a, this process, I think, is the best example of why having a growth mindset is vital when you work in education. And what I mean by that is understanding that we're making some strides along the way, but the work is never done. If you're good, be great. If you're great, be amazing. And just having that idea, we can always be better than where we are, never being satisfied and never being content. Again, going, third slide, just again, the needs, the to-do list, if you will. We have secured our mechanism of locking up phones. Students keep possession of those phones. As we mentioned, did not really want to get into the business of taking personal property that could become problematic with phones being damaged, phones being misplaced, wrong phone given to the wrong person. We have issues. So we made the decision at the high school that we were not going to actually take phones from students, rather than we were going to limit their ability to use those phones for the time period based on their infraction. So currently, if you go to the slide that has the lockbox that you see, and I will tell you, in that photo, that is not how we put phones into the lockbox. We do not put phones into the lockbox where students could still access that answering and hanging up image that you see. Phone is placed backwards. On the backside of that, the touchscreen that actually functions is put to the backside of that so the students cannot access the phone. And then we have the timer that is put in place. That, that box becomes unlocked based on the timer at 2:15, at which time, students have two locations, one in the upstairs of the building, one in the downstairs of the building, where they can turn those boxes in at the end of the day. But they do remain in their possession. Again, that's, that's our initial violation. Certainly, we get to the point where we have parent conferences, we get to the point where parents come in to pick up, and we get to the point where, like I said, we have other consequences with some other more extreme measures that I'll get into here in a minute. But I do... But I do want to just kind of make a point, if, if you see the little black box there at the bottom. The word that really sticks out to me, and again, this is marketing and certainly, hey, buy our product, but you can't dismiss the word addiction. And I think that we are really seeing that with our kids and we're really seeing the, some of the behaviors that are associated with any type of addiction. So, and those behaviors are becoming less and less frequent. However, we're working through a very, very challenging situation. And when I talk about the cellphone enforcement, I'm not, what I'm not talking about are the things that we deal with on a daily basis, such as the mental health of our staff and students, the physical health of our staff and students, the financial struggles that our students and staff share, the food insecurity that they have, the, the family life that some of our students and staff have to go through with loss of family members, sick family members. There's a lot of stuff that we're unpacking every day at King George High School. And I'm not, I say that very, in a very serious tone, because I will tell you that the things that I just mentioned will take priority over the cellphone enforcement when it's deemed necessary. Because we will put those things, such as mental health, physical health, self, the safety and health of our students and, and those things. We will put that over, we will put that in place. We will put their personal well-being in place. If we have to put a cellphone referral to the side for a minute, we will, we will prioritize those accordingly. And I will not apologize for that and I will publicly state that, that our students and our, and our staff come first when it comes to that, because it has to. We work in a people profession. We're here to support people. And I know the cellphone is part of this whole component. However, these are very, very serious, real-life things that are very time-sensitive that we deal with. And we will deal with them accordingly as they are, as they are our top priorities when they come to us. Getting into just some data, we're looking at about seven hundred referrals from the time we began school this year. With six hundred ninety-one referrals, you see we have three hundred eighty-two students as well as three hundred nine repeat offenders. So we have three hundred nine kids who've had at least a referral more than one time. Our, our top winner was seventeen. Seventeen referrals for a student. Winner might not be the right term, but that's our maximum, anywhere from one to seventeen. Again, it, it gets to the point where there's just defiance or addiction or whatever the case may be, and we handle those cases as we meet them. But I think that when you look at a student, and, and we've gone through every avenue with students, from parents coming in to, you know, having restorative practices, to having a mentor, to taking the phone, to locking the phone, to sending them home, to everything that we can do with, with some, with, with some students. I'm not talking about most of our students. Most of our students are complying as they do with all of our rules on a daily basis. But again, six hundred ninety-one referrals, we have ninety-two staff members who have written a cellphone referral. We have, let me see. We have five students currently that are not allowed to have their cellphone in the building. We've had thirteen out-of-school suspensions because of cellphones. We've had seventy-three ISS placements. And we have a student that, for, for a variety of reasons, one being the fact that they simply would not comply with the cellphone policy, they are in an alternate setting at this time. Now, again, that's not the end-all-be-all reason why, but that was a part of that. I would say, I can't sit here and tell you that six hundred ninety-one times a parent has been called, but I would be very confident to tell you that we are definitely, probably at a ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent clip on that. We've had one hundred and twelve in-person or on-phone parent conferences. We've also reminded our teachers continuously about enforcing the policy and also being that role model for, for students as well by not being on their phones in the presence of students. So that is my update. I will, I will say though, our biggest challenge has really not necessarily been the phones being out, it's been what's in their ears. And so that will be a very, very big focal point that we will continue to hit hard when we come back to school, hopefully soon, from the snow. But the ear, earbuds, AirPods, headphones, phones aren't out, but AirPods, earbuds, headphones are in use, we'll say. So that's something that there's, there's no way around saying that's our biggest challenge, is getting those things out of their ears in the hallways and at lunch. Lunch remains the biggest challenge. But I would tell you, anecdotally, I don't see a ton of phones. I've gone day, I've gone the whole day in the hallways at transitions and not seen a phone. I will tell you honestly, I don't know that I've gone through four lunch shifts in a day and not seen a phone. But if I see five out of fifteen hundred, I think we're in, I think we're going in the right direction. We don't have a lot of phones out, but we still have some phones out. What we do have is a lot of kids talking. I will tell you that qualitatively are, the number of fights that we've had has diminished greatly. The number of time that our administration has spent on the social media drama has decreased exponentially, and which is fantastic, because they have a lot of things to do besides manage the social media drama of a teenager's life. And that's been very refreshing, to be honest, that that is no longer, not that it never, not that it's gone, however, it has decreased greatly with that. We've held students accountable. If we've had an altercation between two kids, we've held students accountable, put them in ISS. If they made a decision that they're going to pull their phone out and record that fight, we've held them accountable for that. So we're holding students accountable for that use when those situations arise. But I will tell you, it has been very refreshing to report to you that the social media drama management through the phones has been greatly decreased. And I would tell you that we have less people punching each other, which is obviously a good thing as well. And we have, we have had less verbal altercations as well. I mean, I just think the kids are in a better place. I think it takes a lot of the noise away from them. It's not perfect and you can say what you want to about it. You can say about, you know, everyone's mind works the way it works. It's not perfect and it's never going to be perfect. But that doesn't mean we're going to not, we're going to stop trying to continue to get better at what we do to seek this idea that we can create a cellphone-free environment. I mean, we all cert, we all certainly want that. We all will certainly continue to work towards that. But we are certainly in a, I feel we're in a better place than I thought we would have been in had, when we started to do this in August. I really am thankful for our, for our students mostly for embracing. We have a lot of work to do with the ears, I will say. And if any students are listening, you can't disagree with that. But our students have really embraced this idea that they can live and survive for seven hours without their phones in their hands. Our teachers have done a fantastic job, our administration and our process to, to process eight hundred referrals. Now, keep in mind, that's eight hundred cellphone referrals. Take that aside. And if you have experience or knowledge of how high school works, as I mentioned, some of these very, very big phrases and words that are real-life things that kids face, it's, it, it's, it's a lot. And I haven't even added things like, you know, students, they, they want to belong. They want to figure out who they are and we help them do those things. There's a lot going on here, guys, at, at the high school level with trying to help our students and our staff work through a lot of things. So that, that's kind of my, that's my presentation. But again, I do want to thank all the people who have allowed us to, I would say, win more than we have lost. But again, we still have a lot of work to do. But I am happy to report, I feel like we're trending in the right direction. And I feel like we have the proper things in place at this time. And I think the most important thing is that what we have in place is a mindset that we can always shift, reflect, and move forward with another way to do business if we need to. So I think that's a really, really big, important piece that I'll close with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Does anyone have any questions? I'm not ready yet, so somebody else can go. I don't think anybody does. I guess, considering the white elephant in the room, as far as like what happened at the last school board meeting and how that felt, the comments that were made about the cellphones in the schools. Let me find my spot real quick. One of the things that I really appreciate about you, and you showed it, it didn't feel good, but you showed it, is that you truly do, your heart is so big of empathy for these children and what they go through every day. And, and, but I, I want to ask, I guess, what had, what made you come so strong to challenge like the policy versus, like, we know that if you have to deal with mental issues over a cellphone, that comes first. But why, why did you feel like you had to be so strong towards us about that? Because do you believe that's a fact?
I just think I'm a very honest, transparent, straightforward person and I'm always going to make sure that there's a clear understanding that our students and staff and those issues are going to come first. Regarding comments from the last school board meeting, those are comments, those are opinions, those are things that can be made by anyone. One can say it's a failure, one can say it's success. I would say it's neither, neither one at this time. So for me, it's not about anything other than communicating that we are here to support our kids and staff every day and being honest. I mean, I'm just being honest.
No, and, and I, I do, you are a very honest, you don't hide things, you're very open to allowing people to come to the schools and stuff. And that, I actually, I don't know if that matters to you, but I a hundred percent appreciate that about you. I guess as a school board and me, I'll speak for me. When, and, and really you haven't, nobody's been really breaking policy, because when I went back and read it, it doesn't say anything about having phones off their bodies. It actually just says not in use.
Right.
So you guys have been following policy. It's not, it wasn't to, it's why it didn't make sense to me. What it felt like is, we created a policy as a school board and then admin, Dr. Boyd and you, or whoever did it, made, implemented it in a way that didn't feel like it matched our policy, but it did, when I reread it.
Right. Yeah, I agree with that. I think it matches. I think we all want to be on the same page and work together for the success, for the success of the kids. Absolutely. We're better together than not together.
Right. And then you mentioned, so, the other thing, it's everything that they had brought to the table too, as far as all the good in the schools. That's why it makes it really hard for me to say anything about this. Because even though this is a big deal and, and I'm only here to create policy and hopefully it would get, as a board, it would get followed. And I guess one of my things is like, for one student to have seventeen referrals, I guess, how many times does it take before we realize that that student doesn't need their phone?
Right. And that's where we are in the process with that student, after we've had parent conferences and suspensions and, but, but the other thing is, I can have a kid, I can tell a kid, you're not going to bring your phone in every day, okay? I can't search that kid's body every day to determine they don't have their cellphone. So I can tell a kid, your phone's banned. But my, but my ability to combat that is limited.
Thank you for that answer.
I can't, I can't control the world in that, in that magnitude to say, don't bring your phone. We're going to, we, you know, I, I'd have to get some guidance on if we're going to have the ability to search kids' bag every day to ensure they don't have a cellphone, or warn them every day to ensure they don't have a cellphone. I think that, that, that's a whole nother conversation. But whatever that we need, whatever we need to do, and I mean, I always fall to the side of just relationships and common sense of this phone is impacting your ability to receive an education, so your phone needs to stay home. We don't always get that support from parents and we don't always get that, we don't always have that same lens. Not everyone shares that same lens. But we work through those things. We don't want kids to have seventeen parties, but they do. We don't want kids to skip class seventeen times, but they do. And so we don't want anyone to do anything wrong seventeen times, but if we're not addressing it on the seventeenth time, we're addressing it throughout. And then at some point in time, we have to get to the point where we, we, we can put a student in, if, for example, went to the flex program because they can't control the phone, we can, and they, or they can't find their way to class. And that's why, as Dr. Wright mentioned, the flex program has been a very big addition to our school this year to help keep kids in school that struggle with some of these basic expectations that we have for them, rather than just continuing to throw them away. I'm not a proponent of that. I'm not a proponent of just throwing kids away because they can't follow some basic rules of being on time, being where you're supposed to be and doing what you're supposed to do. So we really have to child, try to put them in some environments where they can see that they have, can have some success if they do those three things, and then hopefully get them back out into the school where they can continue to have that success.
Thank you. Oh, a couple other, but I don't want to, I want to give somebody else a chance if they have any questions. Or, or I can ask another one and then give it over. So one of the bullet, or your slideshow, slide said, success has infinite definitions.
Right.
And I've heard Dr. Boyd say the same thing. So I guess in this scenario, who decides what that success looks like? Or, let me ask you this, because if the goal is, if it's indefinite, then what is our goal? Like, how do we reach a goal that is so indefinite and so broad? And what I'm saying is, is like, and I'll give you this example, because I, this is why I do love your heart, because I was a troubled kid. I was on probation twelve years old, my brother, all of, I mean, skipping school in third grade, not going to fourth grade. So I, I, I love that patience. But what helped us is that when my probation officer is looking at me and my brother, and he's, my brother has eight charges on him already at twelve years old. And he says, I know they, we got removed from Florida and moved to Virginia. And he looked at the probation officer, said, I know they love me because they discipline me. And that, my brother met the standards that were set before him. And they were tight, they were strict, because that's what he needed. I'm not saying that's for every kid. But I guess that's my, that was one of my things, is what do we, why can't we have a solid success, a goal that means what that success is?
I think our goal is not changed. I think all of our goal is a hundred percent. But I think we should be realistic about, for any infraction in the code of conduct, fighting, any of the rules that we deal with, when we have board hearings, drugs and alcohol, all, those goals are always, we want them to be hundred, a hundred percent. But realistically, since the dawn of public education, we will continue to fight that fight. There will, just as you mentioned, just as we could probably all share our own stories of the ways we slipped up. That's why we have, that's why we have these jobs. That's why, and, and I, I, I'll be happy to say that I totally agree with Mr. Watson's approach in terms of building strong relationships. I think that is the bridge with every single child, from the administrator to the child, to be able to deliver what our expectations are. If we don't have that bridge, if it's this firm, you didn't do it, hit the road, Jack, we've lost.
We're not asking, I'm not asking for that.
Because that kid's not in school anymore. But we lost that kid and, and I think that's, that's a failure. So I, I think figuring out how to work with the child and getting them to where we need, and, and that's an ugly process sometimes with, with some of the situations we deal with. But I appreciate the effort.
I think if you look, if you want, if you want to find success criteria, I think we look at things at the end of the school year and we compare things such as fighting, such as grades, such as SOL scores. And while the cellphone isn't the, the, that's not, you know, the only thing that drives those things, but if our fights have decreased and we know the amount of time spent with administration dealing with social media drama has decreased, there are things that some will be more qualitative and some will, some will be more quantitative. But at the end of the day, I think our success criteria is, where were we at the end of last year? Where were we at this year? That's not to say the cellphone has impacted all these things greatly. But I will tell you, we had a math teacher this first semester that had ninety-six percent pass rate for Algebra I. And I will tell you, I will have to tell you, part of that is she held firm on the cellphone thing. And kids weren't on their phones and they learned math. And they didn't use their cellphones to do math. And so I think that success criteria is just that, that we have. Are we going to have a rise in discipline in some capacity? Because if you look at number of referrals, sure we are, because we have eight hundred more referrals this year than we would have necessarily had last year. Or maybe not eight hundred, maybe we have five hundred more, because certainly teachers still wrote referrals for cellphones last year. But I think when we look at things that are, that are tangible and that you can actually look at data, like I said, fighting, inciting, bullying, test scores, passing grades. I think those are the things that we look at. And then we take a qualitative approach as well and really talk to people and talk to kids and talk to teachers about what worked, what didn't work. I'm a red light, green light, yellow light person. Green, let's keep the good stuff. The red, if it's a red light, we throw it away. If it's yellow, we got to decide if it's worth keeping or throwing out. So that my, I compartmentalize my mind in the three areas with school. It's red, green or yellow. And at the end of the year, we, we, we do that as an admin team. We talk about the red, yellow and green light stuff and we get feedback. It's red, green or yellow, and at the end of the year, we 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 do that as an admin team, we talk about the red, yellow and green light stuff and we get feedback from teachers and kids. And and we sometimes do that, well, you know, very overall arching theme with the score, we do it very strategically in certain areas and I so I think. You know, those are the approaches that we take, and I think that's how we really define success criteria for this. Um, th- that. That it is, obviously, it's positively impacting the building. Um, I think everybody can, everybody knows and had that hope that it is positively impacting the building. And the goal is hopefully that, you know, as we. Progress through and all kids know is there's no cellphone. We we get to the point where that's all they know. And. It becomes more of a norm. And I think we'll see hopefully a year from now, two years from now, that we don't have eight hundred cellphone referrals and in at the end of the first semester. That that number is far less because kids have an understanding of this is how we do business in King George County schools.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? Um, thank you for, uh, this is a tough thing, I know, I I think I mentioned to you even personally. I went through this as a high school principal, I mean, a smaller school, but still, it's, this is tough. Um, just a couple of questions and then a comment. Um, from the beginning of the year till now, do you see the overall um with cellphone usage? Um, getting better since the beginning of the year, staying about the same or getting worse?
I would say the cellphones have been rather consistent, I would say the problem we have is the ears, the ears are the problem, the ears, the ears, what's in the ears, that's the problem. I don't see a ton of phones on a daily basis, I really don't. And kids don't care, if if you're walking down the hallway, they don't care that my name's Mark Watson, I'm the principal of King George High School. If I'm walking down the hallway and they're on their phone because they think they need to be on their phone, they're going to be on their phone and then we're going to address them. It doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter, the, I mean, we've had, our two extremes are in the building with phones. We have freshmen that are figuring out high school that are always our highest area of discipline in every discipline category that you can name. And we have our seniors who are young adults doing in some cases real adult things. And dealing with some real adult things that feel like I I'm a young adult, I need to make this phone call. And I'm going to make this phone call, and so those are the two real extremes that we deal with, but I mean.
Well, it so another couple of questions related to this is. I I think I've heard you saying we'd all agree, I mean, this is a process. And um, so I guess looking at, you mentioned several metrics, which sound very good, really. And things that those metrics, you know, in terms of discipline and bullying and fighting and so on seem to be getting better and it looks like there might be relationship to cellphones. Uh, it's hard to say definitively, but it it does point in that direction, so my question would be. Is what do you see in terms of, you had already said, two years from now, one year from now, you're hoping that things will improve, well, my. My question would be is what metrics you will you use to show that it's being improved and. How will you assess that? Do you understand what I'm saying? In other words, where we are now. Where are we going to be this time next year? And what are we hope will be the changes that will occur? In other words, actually looking at some of these metrics you're talking about. And using some of them to say, okay, we are getting better, it may be slow, but it's happening. Uh, are there thoughts to how that might be measured and when you would measure that?
I think there's some thoughts, I think it's really, there's a lot of uncontrollables in there, I mean, in terms of, you know. Types of students, you know, um. How teachers are working through it, how administrators are working through it, um, I think when when we track. Just the number in general and we drill down on the number that leads to OSS and ISS, that we can diminish those OSS and ISS numbers. From the cellphone referral initially, I think that shows that our our students are starting to accept and understand that this is the standard. That you, we're not going to argue and we're not going to fight about this and we're not going to lose our minds about this, that this is, you need to accept your reality. It's not going to change, um, so we can see that decrease in escalating behaviors. Because of the enforcement of the policy, I think that would be a good thing to look at. Um, but I have to put some real thought into that, to be honest with you, I think certainly, I I can't tell you that. A higher number of referrals next year might mean we're making progress, you know what I mean, I can't, I can't.
Well, that's my point, I guess, is I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how we could, because obviously you could say, well, we're hoping there's. At the beginning, it's like, we're hoping there's going to be more, but then you're hoping that's going to decrease. But is are they decreasing because maybe um it, teachers and administrators are not cognizant as much as they were before?
Because people are getting tired.
Right, exactly.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, it it could be anything, I mean, it could be, you know, I've done this every day, I've sent ten in every day and as a teacher, I'm tired of. You know, it could be.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
You know, I'm, you know, it it could be, and I'm not throwing it, it could be any staff member that feels that way, not just a teacher, I mean, the teachers are in front of kids more than anyone else. Um, you know, I I think that it's. It's about, again, it it comes back to the relationships, one of the most powerful things that we have leveraged in our building with phones is our coaches. Because our coaches control. What matters to kids most, our coaches, our sponsors, our leaders of programs. We leverage those relationships because those coaches, those instructors, those directors, those people that. Involve that work kids with kids in extracurricular activity, they hold more power in that building than anyone else. Anyone in education knows that, um, they hold more power than any one of us in this room, quite frankly, when it comes to. Impacting that student's behavior, when Coach A says, put the phone away. That kid's going to listen to that coach more than anyone else because that coach has control over what that student wants most. And that's to be on the field, on the court, on the stage, or wherever that may be. And so we we really try to leverage that, not in a negative way, but we really want our coaches to be a part of that as well and. Our coaches that are in the building and in the profession doing a great job and our coaches that are not in the building and not in the profession doing equally amazing job, so. You know, we 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 try to attack this with every avenue that we can and trying to determine what the success criteria is. It that that's a challenge unto itself.
And I guess that's what I'm asking is that. You don't have all those answers now, but as we're progressing through this, if you could come up, just like we do with anything with, you know. Um, assessing whether we're being successful in the students' math scores, you know, what are these different metrics that we use to show that? I guess as we progress with this, if we could come up with something like you did here, this is great. Um, but like you said, it could go either way, if they decreased, does that mean that it's really working? Or if it increases, does that mean there's more cellphone usage? But I guess what I'm saying is is as using this first semester and even this whole year as kind of almost a test.
Yeah.
How can we put metrics to this to show that we are improving and next year it will be better than it was this year? How can we judge that? What are some things we could, you know, factually? Um, quantitatively see to show that, yes, it it is getting better. And then in the second year, two years from now, it's going to be even better still, but what are the metrics that show that?
And I think to developing, developing a properly written survey. Um, to not skew or put opinions into the phrasing, it would be very important as well for our students and our staff. That's very analytical, that will give us the information that we are seeking, not creating something that's going to. Um, in a sense sway, I think that's that's the goal of every survey is to just seek information. Exactly, unbiased, not well, unbiased may not be the right phrase, because everyone has a bias, but just tell us, just tell us. What's your experience, what what's your, what's your daily like with it?
Those are the things I think could be helpful, I just think about them, um, so that I think as far as a board, it would be helpful to us to be able to see these kinds of metrics.
Absolutely, and I, we will work on developing that survey and continue to monitor this data and. Be glad to come back anytime to share, we can share some things as the school year ends or something throughout the summer or whenever you guys would like for us to come back and do that and. Um, like I said, it's um. It's a work in progress, I feel like we're making progress, but I will tell you, our greatest challenge is the ears. It is one hundred percent the ears and trying to stay ahead of the students with, they're very creative. Um, they they have found all kinds of creative ways to um combat the cellphone being out. Um, we 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 work with them and they teach us a lot of things as we teach them a lot of things and. Um, but I do say, I feel like we're in a better place because of the policy. Um, and I look forward to working with you guys, move forward to continue to improve upon it. And to create some success criteria, so we have a better, um, you know, better data to hold on to, to um, to really see where we are. Because at the end of the day, we. Go back to what I said, we got a red, red light, yellow light, green lighted at the end of the year anyway, so let's do that with data and collectively together and. Continue to move forward and be and work together to. Lessen the disruption that we all know it creates.
It sounds like we need to maybe modify our policy a little to include these things.
I think it's in there. Um, it's, I don't know, it.
I'm looking at it right now.
Wireless.
Handheld communicate, uh.
I don't think it's specific.
It doesn't say that, it says portable communication devices, so. Or other handheld computing devices, so I'm not sure.
So you look at it one way and it's, I don't see, I don't see all these phones out, no one's using their phone, but this white thing is in their ear. And so that tells me there are phones on or their watch, and so it 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 is, it it's right now, again. I'm not naive enough to think that phones aren't used when I see white things in people's ears, and obviously, we all know that, so. But we are somewhat meeting a goal of it not being out and using, causing disruptions in a sense, I mean, I know that. We, I know we have. People in different places on the board with children and potentially grandchildren, but. I don't know, I I don't know how these kids do work with. These things in their ears all the time and they have music class and they can do calculus, I don't get it, but they figure out a way. But anyways. Appreciate you guys, um, any more questions?
Did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Watson, you know, I feel like we had the same conversation in August when you briefed us. Uh, and at that time. We talked about making sure that cellphones were not on the person. Uh, and. You know, you go back to the governor's uh guidance and it says that cellphones will not be on the person. Uh, I've researched West Walling County, Caroline County, Stafford County. And I have come up with a copy of our old King George Public Schools' old cellphone policy. Uh, and in that old cellphone policy, it says that phones will be in a backpack. So. I think that that's where the board needs to move is to, the Madam Chair just mentioned that we need to make a change. And I would like to, for us to think about making an emergency change. To have as of Friday or Monday or wherever students come back to school, that those phones are in the backpack. They're not on their person.
We've asked for them to do that, Mr. Frank, we've have asked for them to do that, and when kids do not have their phones. In their bag and they're out, they're held accountable for that.
Wow.
So I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that was clear that if you ask phone, phones off and away, I mean, that's in your bag.
Off and away is not on your person.
Right, and I'm telling you, we've communicated that we've asked kids to keep their phones in their bags, not on their body.
I've got to tell you, I have never been to the high school and not seen a phone.
Me neither.
And you know, you you said you see days where you don't see one, every day that I go in there, I see phones.
What I said was, I have been through hallway transitions where I haven't seen a phone, and then I followed it up by saying, I haven't been through a lunch period without seeing a phone. So yes, that's what I said, I have seen a phone every day in that building. And I will contend and probably tell you that I probably will see a phone in that building every day for the remaining days that I work in that building. Because we will continue to work hard and do everything we can do. But at the end of the day, I don't control the behavior of fifteen hundred people that have the decision to make as to whether or not they're going to comply with that. Or comply to go to class or comply to be on time or comply to do their work, so we are working very, very hard to eliminate this, but. To say that we are going to, I hope we have a situation where I can walk through the building and not see a phone for a week, not see one phone. That'd be amazing, I think we all want the same thing, but we have um. Maximum security prisons that take great measures to not allow. Alcohol, drugs, phones into them, and what happens every day on a daily basis, they're in those prisons. So I don't know, I hate to make that analogy, but I think that we're doing a pretty good job. I think that we are relying on kids to make good decisions and I think that for the most part, our kids are making good decisions. And we we have asked them to put phones in bags and when they do not, we hold them accountable.
You know, I see this patience for all stakeholders, it seems like, you know, I'm sure that was directed to me, but.
I'm sorry?
We've been, we've been doing this since August and I, you know, patience can only run so far. It's time, it's time for us to see, and you know, you mentioned two years, we may still be dealing with this, and we may. We may, and I I expect to be dealing with something like ten percent. But I don't expect to be dealing with twenty-five percent. And if you talk three hundred and eighty-two students, that's about twenty-five percent of the fifteen hundred that we have. So, I mean, we need to get. And you know, you've mentioned a student with seventeen referrals. That tells me that the consequences are not strong enough.
Mr. Frank, do you want us to send the kids from school? Do you want us to throw kids out of school? Is that what you want us to do?
The consequences are not strong enough to deter that student from bringing the, to using the phone. That's what I'm saying.
You're at, but what you're, what you're stating is you're asking me to control an uncontrollable.
I'm not asking you to, I'm asking you to put more effort into.
Okay. I I, and as I said, we have a team of people that work extremely hard to support this every day.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, we appreciate your presentation, we have to discuss potentially modifying the policy at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, you did a great, you did a great job, thank you very much.
Um, seeing as we have no uh student representatives, we'll move on to close meeting. Can I have a motion to move to closed meeting?
Pursuant to State Code Section two point two dash three seven one two A of the Code of Virginia. I move that the board convene in closed meeting to review hires, substitutes, resignation, retirements as permitted under. Two point two dash three seven one one A, number one of the Code of Virginia.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board votes aye, we are now in closed session. Do we have a motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify Pursuit to State Code Section 2.2-3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second. Certify.
Certify.
School certifies.
Certify.
Motion made, seconded, and certified. All remain me, oh, duh, I'm sorry. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now back in open session. Do we have a motion to approve personnel as presented?
I move to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next, we can move on to our consent agenda. Does everybody have a chance to look at those? Thank you, Aaron. We're getting really caught up. Let's keep that up. I guess we'll start with December 9th regular meeting. Did anybody have any changes that they want to see made to those? Are we good? No?
Okay, then. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 9th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye? Motion carries. Now to the work session minutes. Does anybody have any changes to that or see any discrepancies? Okay. Are we good on that?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the December 16th, 2024 work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And then lastly, we have December 19th for our special meeting. That was a lot less to view. Any, any concerns on that?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the December 19th, 2024 special meeting.
Okay.
Can we have a vote?
It's been made and seconded. So any discussion?
Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving along. We have committee reports. Mr. Frank, do you have any committee reports?
Oh, ma'am.
Ms. Cleveland?
Um, no committee reports, but I know that I'm taking over the governor's.
Yes. And I can forge your name to the person who sends out the, the meeting calendar and everything. I know there, there's probably a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. So I'll get, make sure to get that scheduled.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Nope.
No, we're supposed to have a special item meeting this morning, this afternoon, but it was canceled because of the weather and school was canceled.
I haven't on either. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, Madam Chair. So I've got a few things this evening. First, if you had, if you had a chance to look at the King George County Schools' January newsletter, it's a ton of good information in there. So if you have an opportunity, please take a look at that. Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday was supposed to be the VAS, VASBO Conference in Richmond. We did not make it to Richmond, although that conference was held virtually. This is usually the conference where we discuss the governor's budget, things like the composite index, a lot of the building blocks that goes into, that go into the budget request. So we, we were able to have those meetings virtually. And I'm happy to report that between Ms. Williams and myself, we have the information that we need in terms of revenue and expenditures and things of that nature to construct the budget request. And, and we'll have that ready for you at our next school board meeting, based on the information we received from the VAS, VASBO Conference. Troy mentioned earlier, Dr. Wright mentioned earlier, the virtual survey that we put out. We've talked a little bit about that. I wanted to give you guys some hard data on what we're seeing thus far in the interest survey. This is again, students not only in, in our secondary schools right now, but in homeschool situations that are interested in attending King George County Schools through a virtual program. So we've thus far had 115 total responses. We would like that to go up. We certainly would. And any, any avenues that you guys have to explore, particularly with our homeschool populations, would be very beneficial. Of those 115 total responses, 20 homeschool parents are interested. Very good number, very high number. 79 King George County school parents are interested. And, and 16 of those respondents mentioned that they were not interested. But right now, that's a very, very good number to be able to get that program off the, off the ground and running. So we have our next planning meeting for the division, January 13th. So that'll be in-house staff talking about next steps for our virtual program. And then we have information session nights for parents and students that are scheduled February 6th for the high school and February 11th for the middle school. Both of those start at 6:00 PM. I believe they'll be held in the auditoriums at those respective schools. And again, that's going to be an opportunity, another opportunity for our parents and our students to really wrap their arms around what this program looks like. And, and they'll be able to have their questions answered at that time. Moving on, there's a few things that are hanging out there right now that I want to make sure I, I make you guys aware of that we're working on. Ms. Cleveland, you asked for really a, a review of our literacy and numeracy data in terms of the COVID drop and, and things of that nature. So I've worked with and continue to work with our instruction department and also our testing department. They're pulling together some really good data and some really good information to, to forward to the school board at our next meeting. So they'll have a good, good presentation to provide for that. Mentioned earlier, I think in a week or so, or maybe towards the middle of the month, a meeting with the athletic directors and the principals at the secondary schools to talk about athletic eligibility discussion in terms of academics and making sure that we can have a consistent, I think the, the idea is to present to the board a consistent approach across our schools from secondary to, to high school in terms of athletic participation and, and what that means and, and, and terms of academics.
Dr. Ward, can we add something in that with, with absenteeism?
Uh, yes. Uh-huh. We can have that conversation in terms of absenteeism as well. Thank you, Mr. Frank. I told you guys before we left for break that I will meet with the high school to discuss considerations with programming if the ninth grade shifts. This has to do with our discussion about shifts in terms of sixth grade and moving back to the elementary school, the discussion about the new school, everyone following me on that conversation. I will reach out to the principals as soon as we get back in school and see if we can't have a conversation specifically with our high school teachers and, and those programs and making sure that we start to consider what that means in terms of programming. I have met with the county administrator and I believe I'm on the agenda for the next Board of Supervisors meeting for our fund balance request. So again, this is the second part of our work session conversation where we talked about the request for math curriculum and, and school carryover funds. And I'll make that, that request to the Board of Supervisors at their next meeting. That's, that's coming. I've also gone to make public I've also gone to, uh, make public comment at the board of supervisors meeting and met with the, uh, county administrator. I, I'm not getting a whole lot of feedback right now on, on any follow-up from the referendum, where we go from here. So, I'm not sure if, if board members would like to reach out to their respective board members or how we would like to continue that conversation in terms of the school board. Uh, I'll continue to explore avenues, but just want to make the school board aware that I don't see a lot of inroads right now into that conversation concerning next steps following the referendum.
So, we had talked about, uh, school board members meeting with board of supervisors. I think we have a, some kind of schedule set up. Do we have it in stone yet, or do we need to work on that?
I've had conversations with a couple of, uh, board of supervisors, but, um, just conversations, and, um, I was setting up at least for two of us to meet with two of them, and I think it would be good, um, and we can talk about it as a discussion at the next board meeting if you'd like, as to, I, the obvious one would be for us to maybe meet with our counterpart for the constituency, like I would meet with Kathy Bender because she represents Shiloh and so on, and then maybe a second person and do that on a monthly basis and talk about these things, and then it's kind of, because we can do two-on-two, you just can't have three of us. And so, these are the kinds of conversations that we should have, is what's going on with the referendum. So, the answer to your question is, yeah, we, we had a discussion. I'd like it to make it a little more formative, Madam Chair, maybe at the next board meeting. We can actually, you know, maybe between now and then, at least have each one of us maybe contact our counterpart representative on the board of supervisors and talk to them about this.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. What are we doing right now, though, refer, what have we've done to, like, because the last time I spoke with Smolnik, y'all, or you, I think, maybe y'all were having conversations, and that's just died, I guess, because of the holidays, or?
I went to public comment and then followed up with meeting with Mr. Smolnik individually, um, and, and his response really from, I, I don't want to speak for him, but, but I don't know right now that there's next steps that have been discussed. I'll just say it that way.
We need to ask why, yeah.
I think, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
Oh, I think that would.
You talk to him often, don't you?
Uh, we, we have a standing meeting.
He told me that you guys are developing a good relationship.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been very good.
We just need to push it.
It's been wonderful. Uh, and then just finally, I, I want to say thank you to, um, specifically our, our maintenance, custodial, uh, our snow removal crew that, um, you know, really doesn't punch a time clock at all. They just, if the phone rings, they go, uh, and in this last week, there's been times where many of us, most of us are, are hunkering down and, and they're venturing out. Uh, so I, I want to say thank you to everybody in the division that took on those roles and, and really helped us through this, uh, you know, historical snow slash ice event, so thank you to them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Now, we'll move on to board comment. Mr. Frank, let's start with you.
Like to thank everyone who came out tonight. The presentations from the staff were really great, uh, a lot of work put into those. Thank Mr. Blazer, uh, for his comments. I think it's something that, um, we as a board need to think about, uh, look into, if that's the right thing there. And again, I, I don't know how this works or whatever, but I'd like to request that the board, uh, publish or, or do an emergency, uh,
You.
deal thing with the phones so that, uh, on the day one, when the students come back, their phones are in their backpacks. It's been researched that that's where they're supposed to be. The governor's guidelines is that's where they're, they're supposed to be, uh, and I don't think we should start a new semester without having them there. So, is that, I mean, is it possible for us to do an emergency and make that, or whatever we want to call it, make that happen tonight?
Emergency change to our policy? I'm, I don't know if that's possible.
Um, yeah, as a board, we can always change policy, Madam Chair. I think what, uh, Mr. Frank is asking is to schedule an emergency meeting before, uh, before Friday. I don't know how we could do that. Tomorrow's a declared public holiday, um, and I'm not sure how we do that, Madam Chair. My guess is that they'll either stop back Friday or Monday.
We also have our, um, requirements in terms of notification time.
Yeah, we have to have five days notification for. We can't just call a meeting.
It's not something we can handle tonight while we're here.
I would not be in favor of handling that. I'm not prepared, but I don't, I'm just one member.
I guess we can take a vote and see if anybody wants to take a look at the policy and change it tonight, or make a compromise because it is kind of tight. Set a date to talk about it. It might, it might not be Friday because that is right around the corner, but we can discuss that maybe.
Well, our next meeting's in two weeks.
That's too long?
Well, we're only talking about changing in a couple of words. It's not that we're going to change the whole policy right away. I think the whole policy needs to be changed, but I think we're talking right now just a couple of words, which is, and, uh, lock, in the backpack, or?
Madam Chair, if I could say something? I, I'm just not, I don't have it, I mean, I could look at it, but I have, I'm not prepared to even make a minor change without even seeing it, and then all of a sudden, a moment's notice. I don't know if that's the wisest thing to do. I think we need to have time to look at the policy, even if we're changing just a few words.
Okay. Shall we take a vote on it? Okay. So, if, I'll ask each one of you if you're prepared to make a change to a policy tonight with a yea or nay? Mr. Bush?
Nay.
Ms. Davis?
I'm undecided. Like, if the board's for it, I'll do it. If they're not, then I understand. We can just set it on a different date.
Right. Cleveland?
I, I'm, I'm okay to discuss it if we want to discuss it, so I've seen the policy, so I'm, we can discuss it if we need to.
Okay. And I'll yea you.
The reason why I say that is because if not, we're going to have another meeting.
Well, the next time, so.
Well, I would like to see us wait and have that as part of the agenda at the next board meeting. I think that's the wisest thing to do, simply because it gives us time, because to even schedule another meeting, and even now, we've already made general reference to trying to finishing by nine, and this discussion, in my opinion, would go well beyond nine o'clock, in my, in my opinion.
So, how about if we vote if we talk about it at the next meeting? You want to take a vote on that? Because that would be the next possible time we could discuss it, if we don't discuss it tonight. So, let's go with a vote for the next meeting, unless some, anybody's willing to schedule a meeting, like you said, in a week. We have, we still have to publish it, so what would you recommend, Dr. Boyd?
I mean, and certainly at, at the will of the collective board, um, and, and I'm available for whatever you guys would like to do. I, I, I'm reviewing it and reading it in my mind right now and trying to figure out where those few words would fit in. So, personally speaking, I'm trying to figure out how that looks in the moment, um, to, to do a very thorough job. I think it would be more prudent to, to wait and really flesh that out, although I, I'm, I say that and I, I mean that, uh, and I understand Mr. Frank's concern about starting school back up, and I, I understand that.
Does anybody have any more comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to simply make a motion that this become a major discussion item to possibly an action item at the next board meeting to make those changes, and we'll have us time to look at the policy in depth, and maybe even, Mr. Frank, you come ready to, um, look at those couple of words that you'd like to change, or maybe even the whole policy? Is it, so that's my motion.
I think I want to second that because we, I think there's a lot, some other stuff that we might want to look at in there, too, besides of this, so I second that, yes.
Yeah. Earbuds and things like that.
Right, I was thinking.
Yes, I agree. See, there's just so much. Why do two words when we, you know, watches, earbuds? There's so many things, and I think we'd, let's, let's look at the whole policy.
So, I just heard on the news, I believe it was this week, that Fairfax County is also banning the watches. Did you hear that?
Yeah, watches are a big one.
So, we might want to take a bigger look at.
I think it's fair to say how he worded it, that the next meeting, we can make it as a possible action item.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Frank, were you done with your board comment?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Cleveland?
Yes, uh, good evening. I want to say congratulations to our new chairwoman, Kathy Hoover, and also our vice chair, Colleen Davis. I know they're going to do great things this year. Congratulations again. Thank you to the staff that came out and gave us updates on the strategic plan. That was, uh, some really great information that you passed on to us today. When I was reading through it, um, and I did, uh, hear Dr. Boyd state that this is something that is brought to us yearly, um, and I did have a question about that, um, just in general, if we sort of look at that halfway through the year to see what progress we're making, or maybe address any challenges that we have, I think maybe like halfway through the year, we can relook at that and see where we are with that. I think that would be helpful and actually keep us on, on track with, with those plans that we're making. Wanted to say thank you to Mr. Watson. I really appreciate, uh, him coming out and talking about the cell phone policy. I, I could tell that he really cares about the students, um, and, and I, and I understand that it is a really, uh, hard, um, I guess, process to manage, and I appreciate him talking through that with me, uh, personally, because my background is much more in a very structured, policy-driven background. Policy is very important to me. My background requires that I follow policy in my current job and any job that I've had. Um, I think it's important that we continue to work together and, um, enforce those policies with our students. I, I think that there has been, um, a significant, a significant amount of progress made, and I appreciate everything, uh, Mr. Watson and Dr. Boyd is doing and all the teachers and staff, um, because it's really important. It's not just, uh, important for the instruction time, but also, you know, we talk about the mental health of, of kids, the bullying. These phones, uh, they aid to that, and, uh, the less they use that, the, um, the hope would be that that bullying and that, um, that bullying and that, uh, mental health would improve, right? And I think that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Mr. Bush?
Uh, first, I want to thank, um, the four who made the presentation. I just really appreciate it. Wright, you know, Beth, and Amanda, thank you so much. Those were really, a lot of work and a lot of effort went into them. Um, and I know that those were just reports on the strategic plan, but it is nice that, um, you took the time to make those. I do want to also thank Mr. Watson. I think he's, uh, put a lot of time and effort into this, and I know it's a very stressful thing also. He gets, he gets, uh, he gets it from all different sides, from the students, from the teachers, from, you know, his, um, from the superintendent, from the school board, from everybody. He's getting the pressure, and it's a lot, and I know that, um, he's doing the best he can, and I do agree that he's being as honest as he can about things, and I appreciate the progress that, that has been made. But, but obviously, there's always more that can be done, and Dr. Watson even stated that. Congratulations again to Kathy and Colleen. Um, I think that to Kathy, I think you're going to do a fine job as chair, and, and I've already told you that before. I also think that it's, uh, we've talked about it, this, uh, doing a Survey Monkey to, uh, really be able to look at some staff morale. I think it's a great idea. So, um, as soon as we can move on that, make sure that that's on the agenda if we can, Madam Chair, uh, for discussion, and, um, uh, put some more legs to what that might look like, and I know that, uh, Carrie's going to give us some questions, which will be great, or some ideas for that, and I'm looking forward to that. And that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, um, no, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Col.
First, I want to thank Pastor Stephen Wang coming out, and he was super excited about it, and he brought his family, he came in my shop and was like, "Hey, Carrie asked me to pray." And I'm like, "Oh, great, Stephen, that's awesome." He's from California, so he brings a lot of energy with him. He's a lot of fun. I do want to thank our school staff. Well, first, our 12-month employees. I know that I need to ask this from you guys, like, if I say something that might come across wrong or sound rude or crude or impatient or anything, I'm honestly learning and just asking questions, and I'm kind of a, I just tend to ask, I don't know. So, I, I ask for grace if y'all feel like that I don't support you in any way, because I totally do. And, and just for grace for, like, when I'm asking questions, it's because I'm learning things and figuring it out up here. Second, I would like to say is that I know that what you guys put on these slideshows is only a tiny picture of really what's going on every day in those schools, the good. And what I'm learning as a new school board member, still fairly new, is that it's easy for us, because we're here just to create policy, so when we walk into school, which the Code of Virginia requires us as responsibilities, is to make sure that these policies are being enforced, so it's easy to see those things not happening and maybe critique it. It feels that way. So, I'm learning to balance that better. But I do want to thank you guys for all the good that is happening in our schools. We do have a great school system. Our high school looks, and I, I just say this because I haven't said anything to you about it, Dr. Boyd, but we, every time I walk up to the high school and I see that new mural or whatever it's called on the doors in the front of the high school, it's like, it makes me feel proud because it's just so nice looking and clean that the schools are. And the other thing I wanted to say, too, is like, some comments have been made about power. There's, I did not join the school board for any power. If anything, this is not a fun job, and it's brought more stress to my life than it has anything else, and I'm not being that ugly. It's just, I didn't do it for that. I did it to make a difference, and I'm learning that balance. So, I just ask for grace there as well, and, um, and you guys, everybody here is amazing, and, and thank you for the congratulations. I'm excited for Kathy to learn this experience and me to train behind her, and thankfully, David's here to make sure that we're making motions correct, so thank you, and that's it.
Well, thank you, everybody, for the confidence, and thank you to all the staff. I do know there's a lot of work that's put into everything that you do, and I'm glad that you get a few days to rest, um, extra days, I should say. I think for me, about the cell phone policy, I'm hoping that some parents and students are watching, because I have been in situations where I've been in the high school, in the office, waiting for a student or just talking to, uh, uh, somebody, and somebody will come in to get their child, you know, to pick up them for, from a, for a doctor's appointment or whatever, and they, "Oh, I texted him. He should be on his way now." So, you're not teaching your child to follow the rules. So, you might want to take a look at that, because when they walk out of the house and they drive a car and they choose to not follow the rules, there's, it's similar. So, I would ask that students and parents try and help the staff and the administration to all be able to, you know, do their part, because it's all for good reason. We don't make policies and, and ask that they be enforced just to be, you know, mean or to make your life miserable. It's all for, you know, research shows that this is for good cause, so, um, I'm going to get off my soapbox now, but, um, I do appreciate everything that each and every one of you on the board does, and I'm looking forward to a great year, and thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No. Madam Chair, I thought about what we were to.
Sure.
I couldn't think about in there, uh, or what I couldn't think about earlier. At our, either our last, uh, work session or the last, or the special meeting we had, or we talked about principals, uh,
Yeah.
coming to board meetings.
Or designate.
Yeah, it's, are we going, I mean, is that something we can talk about at the next meeting we have?
Or designate, designees, like somewhere new, yeah.
Does some, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that we have principals or a designate at the school board meetings.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You're fine.
What is the designate?
An admin?
Well, it could be the, the vice, the vice principal. It could be, um, just another administrator, um, one of the assistant principals. It could be, because, you know, obviously principals sometimes have meetings and they wouldn't be able to come to all of ours, and so it'd be whoever he designates to represent the school, which would usually be another administrator, even possibly the athletic director, but it would probably be another administrator.
That was actually, uh, Mr. Watson's idea to me, was to either have him or like a designate come in his place if he can't make it every meeting.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I definitely agree to that, but I'm just wondering who that designate could be.
Should we be specific, is what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, it, I mean, I guess it would be okay if it was a teacher. It wouldn't matter.
I think it's admin and the staff, like.
I think generally it'd be admin.
Yeah.
There's, there's more than enough administration, I think, that I don't think they'd ever get down to the level of a teacher. If we were much smaller. If we were much smaller, that'd be another story. Might get a department chair or something, but.
A high school could do one principal and vice principal.
High school and middle school are easier than the elementary.
That's true, yeah.
Elementary schools have.
Oh, should we make it for all the schools? I guess so.
I think we, you know, we assume that a designee will be an assistant principal or.
Or one of the administrators.
But just to make it clear, we should probably state what the designee should be.
I'm fine with you saying that the designee should be an administrator, but that would include like the athletic director. Is he considered an administrator?
I don't think, I don't think that would be a diff.
I don't think, our athletic directors are middle and high. You're not going to have that issue in the middle of high school. You're going to really have the issue on the elementary level. I think, you know, administration, I'm trying to think who beyond.
We have at least.
You have two, you have three now, three administrators at the elementary levels.
I wonder if we could require one elementary school at a month, I mean, one elementary school.
I'd like to see all of them. If we're going to do this, all of them.
If we have three people at the elementary schools and they divide it up, we're talking once a quarter, somebody has to come in.
If we're going to do this, I think it's valuable.
No, it's more than that because we'll get more meetings.
I'd like to see, if we're going to do this, I'd like to see a representative from every school.
Yes.
Every meeting.
Just leave that as the motion that you made, Mr. Frank, and just leave it with that. I think it might prove to be difficult at times for the elementary and if it does, then we can come back and talk about it. Let's hear from the element, because I know the high school and middle school probably won't be a problem. If the elementary approves to be a problem, Dr. Boyd will bring it back to us and say, hey, this has been a little bit of an issue and then we can talk about it. But I'd like to say, let's go ahead with the original motion, say an, you know, an administrator, principal or his designee, which will mean another administrator.
Another question would be how long do they have to stay?
The whole time, probably because of our comments at the end.
And we're hoping to be done by nine?
Yeah, so.
Well, having, I just, I think I mentioned this before, having been an administrator in many different schools, this is one of the few schools I've ever been in where they weren't required and we were always required to stay for the whole meeting. There was no permission to leave early. That doesn't mean we have to do that. But I do think that staying for the whole meeting, because sometimes even our board comments at the end will speak to specific things that's not motions, it's not discussion and that's become even somewhat of our opinion and it's good for administrators to hear that.
So are the other divisionals near us doing this? Do we know that?
Say that again?
Do the other school divisions do this?
I think it's a mixed bag, but.
Like Stafford, Northmoreland, things like that, they have this?
The larger school divisions, I want to say as a rule of thumb typically do not, just because there's so many schools and so many principals, smaller school divisions in my experience do.
That's a good question, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Can I just ask one more question? Dr. Boyd, do you think that the administrators would not like this?
I don't want to speak for them. I think there's value. I would say this is, again, off the cuff, there's value for them, there's value. Let me tell you what we do now. Typically, following our meeting, I meet with them and let them know everything that was discussed so that there's a, there's a good bridge between the school board discussions and what goes on on a day-to-day basis. That's how we're bridging that gap right now. There's value for them being here. At the same time, certain times of the year, the demands that, the evening demands that they have are great. I mean, we're coming off of December where even our elementary school principals, it could have been two or three nights a week that they were, that they were out of their, they were away from their family. And so the first principal I ever worked with was, he told me on day one, he said, one or two nights a week is good. He said, three nights is divorce, four and five nights, leave the job. So I think certain times of the year, it'll be very manageable for them to be here and very valuable. There's other times of the year, if you think about our secondary principals, they all cover our athletic events as well as our, as well as our athletic director. So it's an extra night for them. They can cycle through a little easier. You know, with five principals, they can, you know, take a meeting a month or something like that. So it's a little more manageable for them, but they also have more, our secondary principals have more evening demands than our elementary school principals do. So that's my two cents on it.
So I just, board, I think that we should think about this in terms of requiring it every meeting because especially with the elementary school teachers, there's only two administrators there and they would be expected to come six times.
But now there's three with this, we have, they have a special ed, special ed assistant principal now, but there's three and you're right. So one of those three would be required to come, you know, once a month, twice a month, whatever, however that works out for them, so.
Meetings a month, so one of them wouldn't come at all out of the three of them. It would rotate and then the next month, nobody would have to show up. It'd be one, if there's three and there's only two meetings, there's always going to be somebody who gets a whole break, month break.
So there's three in the elementary schools?
Three in the elementary schools now.
There's five at the high school and middle school.
Yeah. That's only two, three times a year for the secondary.
Yeah, okay. I just was thinking in terms of, are they like switching on and off and it is a lot, you know?
I think I'd be comfortable going back to our principals with the motion that was made and then initiate it and we can come back to see if there's any major stress points.
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of liberal, like if they can't make it, it's understood, like if there's nobody available, but.
I can speak as having done this for many, many years, it is extremely valuable for, as an administrator, for me to be at the board meetings. And also, another thing is how many times if an administrator was here, does Dr. Boyd maybe even call the administrator to answer a question that we may not, may not know right off the bat, which was often done in board meetings that I've been in. And if he's got a representative from each one of the schools, that will help us a lot to find out information that Dr. Boyd may not have. And that was, that was one of the big reasons for attending the board meetings was, you know, input for data or information for the school board.
So Mr. Frank, was your motion, can you repeat your motion, please?
My motion was that we have the principal or a designee attend school board meetings.
From each school in the division?
Each school.
An administrative designee.
Administrative designee.
David's seconded.
Okay. Any more discussion? Going once, going twice? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
When's our next meeting?
Twenty-ninth.
I move that we adjourn until January twenty-ninth at seventeen-thirty, five-thirty.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.